Okay, welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 10th, 2021. Justin, please call the board.
Mrs. Steph.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Ennis.
Here.
All members present?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a three minute sign. Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America. Consider the Republic a righteous land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Russell is the legislative report.
I have a couple things tonight. Senate Bill One, which I talked about for a while now, was signed by Governor Dewine. So that pretty much does two things in it. One of them, which I believe becomes active almost immediately, for the 2021-22 school year, which permits school districts to employ substitute teacher according to the school's own education requirements, provided they are deemed to be a good moral character and successfully complete a criminal records check. So that's something that the whole group of House is going to be shortage. The other thing that that one, that Senate Bill One included, that one about the financial literacy requirement, that one goes into effect for students entering the ninth grade on or after July 1st of 2022, which would require them to complete a half a unit of instruction on financial literacy as part of their required preschool curriculum. So those are some of the details. House Bill 334, I'm sorry, this is one that's still in the House. I believe it just completed its second hearing. This is actually specific for board members. This is something that would require each board member to complete training on ethics, public records, and open meetings. Increases compensation a board member may receive for attending meetings from $125 up to $200 per day. And then it would also increase compensation for board members for a group training program. So that one is not passed yet, but it's going through.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Pembroke, the superintendent's report, please.
Okay, I'd like to recommend a one-year additional duties contract for 21-22 school year for Kurt Habermill as the Vermillion High School head basketball coach, Kurt Ennis as the Vermillion High School assistant basketball coach, and Leah Ennis as the Vermillion High School chair advisor. We can just put these two together then, I think. And then the second item, I think we could just vote for both at the same time. A one-year administrator contract for the 21-22 contract school year beginning January 3rd of 2022 for Stephanie Atwater as a mental health therapist. And that's, I'll choose a fun recommended.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Abstain.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Abstain.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, three years, two extensions.
You know, we have the treasurer's report, Mr. Kinsch.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the financial report for October 31st, 2021, and attachment A.
I'll move.
Question?
All right, starting with the general funds. First, we'll go through revenue. Through the month of October, the district has received 10.3 million in federal, or in, I'm sorry, general fund revenue compared to 10.2 million last year and 10.5 million fiscal year 20. As we're progressing throughout the year, the district is on pace to collect its historic revenue average. Moving on to food service, through the month of October, the district received 182,000 in food service compared to 50,000 last year and 113,000 fiscal year 20. Some things to note, historically, the district starts to see a full month reimbursement of federal funds in October. That's why the revenue this month is so high. And also, with all lunches being fully reimbursed from the federal government this year, revenue should outpace our historical averages. Moving on to revenue for all funds through the month of October, the district has received 10.9 million in revenue compared to 11.1 at this time last year and 11.9 in fiscal year 20. Couple different changes here and there, but overall, the district, again, it's going to be on pace to collect the aggregate amount of revenue from all funds as it historically has. Moving on to the expenditure side. Looking at the general fund through the month of October, the district has spent 8.1 million in the general fund compared to 8.8 at this time last year and 8.3 fiscal year 20. Again, overall, the district is on pace to spend its historical average, assuming capital projects are completed next fiscal year, not this fiscal year. Moving on to food service expenditures through the month of October, the district has spent 249,000 from food service compared to 195,000 at this time last year and 248,000 in fiscal year 20. You know, again, everything that we're seeing, food service expenditures, they're in line with historical averages. And moving on to all funds. Through the month of October, the district has spent 8.7 million compared to 9.0 million at this time last year and 9.6 in fiscal year 20. You know, overall, the total expenditures so far this year is slightly lower than historical averages, but as time moves on, these will catch themselves back up. And moving on to cash, looking at the general fund through the month of October, the district has 20.1 million in cash compared to 17.5 million at this time last year and 18.3 in fiscal year 20. Moving on to food service through the month of October, the district has 113,000 in cash compared to 29,000 at this time last year and 244,000 in fiscal year 20. And again, this is going to go back to the federal reimbursements, so full federal reimbursement this year. Banning food service cash should increase slightly each month from this point of November. And then taking a look at all of our cash. Through the month of October, the district has 23.8 million in cash compared to 21.5 at this time last year and 21.9 in fiscal year 20. Lastly, we'll take a look at investments. Through the month of October, the district has earned a total of $47,234.18 on interest compared to $56,644.85 at this time last year. This is a difference of $9,410.67, or 16.6% less. We had a big hit there in October compared to the last three months. Any questions?
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. On number two, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the November 2021 five-year forecast and as attachment B.
I'll move. Second.
So first, we'll start off with the purpose. You know, the purpose of the five-year forecast, it's really for three things. It's to engage the Board of Education and the community in long-range planning and discussions of financial issues facing the district. Number two, it's to serve as a basis for determining the school district's ability to sign contracts associated with continued operations. And number three, it's to provide a method for the Department of Education and the Audger State's office to identify school districts with potential financial problems, namely financial caution, watch, or emergency. And just to give you some history on that, what those definitions are. Fiscal caution is a deficit greater than 2%, but less than 8%. Fiscal watch, what that means is if a district fails to submit a five-year forecast, you will automatically replace the fiscal watch, or if you're projecting a current-year deficit. And then to get yourself into fiscal emergency, what you need to have is a current-year deficit of more than 15%. Also, voters have not approved a levy that would raise enough money in the next fiscal year to eliminate that deficit, meaning those criteria will automatically place you in fiscal emergency. We are none of those right now, just putting everybody at ease here. Moving on, so on the revenue side of a five-year forecast, there's really only two sources. We have local sources and we have state sources. In this presentation, first, we'll start and we'll take a look at the local side of things. When you're looking at a five-year forecast, lines 1.010, 1.020, and 1.050, those are local sources of revenue. Local property taxes, they account for 77.5% of the district's revenue. Property tax values have been increasing at an average of 1.5% between 2013 and 2018. However, in the last two years, they've actually averaged 4.5%. Property tax collection rates have historically been strong, and in this forecast, they continue to be strong. And then lastly, House Bill 920 prohibits tax collection to grow with residential property values. That's important here for the next slide. Again, I always like to show our historical property values, where they were, where they're moving to. Property values dropped in 2010, 2011, and they did not return to the 2010 values until 2018. As you can see, starting in 2018, through the triennial updates, the district value has really taken off the last three years here. But for, I should say, before the last three years, they've been stagnant since 2010. Moving on to our historical property tax collections. Historical collections have been down since the elimination of the tangible personal property tax phase-in, and that happened in 2011. So again, you can see that revenue dropped down substantially after 2011. However, average collection in the past 10 years, it's been right around $17 million. We've had a couple years where we've been a little bit below that, a couple years where we've been a little bit above that. Specifically, the last four years or so, I'd say we've had a pretty good run where we've been above that $17 million mark. And I see that trend to continue. Moving on to the state side of revenue. On the forecast lines 1.035 and 1.045, what those are, those are the states restricted and unrestricted grants of aid. State revenue accounts for 18.2% of the district revenue. Beginning this fiscal year, though, Ohio adopted a Fair School Funding Plan. And they've created a bunch of different ways to calculate how much the state is determined to provide to the schools based on the local citizens' ability to pay taxes. Funding is driven by a base cost methodology that incorporates the four components identified as necessary to the education process. The Fair School Funding Plan, they've determined that the four components are direct classroom instruction, buildings, leadership and operations, instructional and student support, and district leadership and accountability. What they do is they take all those together, come up with a number, add into there our state share index, mix it together, and come up with another formula. They then fund that side, and the local side is determined, or the local side then pays that difference. Moving on to the restricted, the historical side of things, I think I could say. So under the Fair News Funding Model, there was this thing Governor Dewine introduced. It was called Student Wellness and Success, and it's been brought into the general fund this year. Historically, this was outside of the forecast. So back when Governor Dewine took over, he created the Student Wellness and Success Fund. I had to create a fund, it was the 467 Fund, it was outside the general fund, and it did not show up on this forecast. With the new Fair School Funding Plan, they brought that student wellness and success back into the forecast and back into the general fund. Student wellness funds in the district, they are receiving less state aid than they historically have been. Again, so ODE is currently working on correcting our state foundational reports. As more information becomes available in the forecast, the forecast of revenue may change. So right now, ODE is up in arms a little bit with determining, now that the Fair School Funding Plan has been passed, how exactly to tie that into the formulas that they've been using. So ODE, starting July 1st, has been scrambling, trying to figure out how we're going to get payments to the schools and document how we're going to give those payments to the schools. When they first did it, they thought that they would be able to create a new formula and have all this stuff wrapped up by September. September's gone, now they're hoping that they'll have this back up in December. We'll have to wait and see how that plays itself out, but ultimately, right now, the revenue and the expenditures that I'm getting from the state are exactly what they were last year. So this year's funding and how they're going to do it is a little uncertain at this point. So what I ended up doing was just doing a modest increase of 1%, taking a look at the trends for legislative service commissions and what they're doing with this new Fair School Funding Plan. It looks like a lot of the urban schools are gaining a lot of money, and a lot of the rural schools are pretty much sticking with the status quo. And so as such, I kept it that way, and I kept it that way throughout the forecast. Moving on to all other operating revenues. All other operating revenues are forecasted to account for 4.3% of the district revenue. What these are, this is your transportation, this is the interest on investments that we just covered. Other sources of revenue that are not state or local, it's sale of assets, payments to both taxes and Medicaid reimbursement. We do not receive a whole substantial lot of money for this, and as such, this, all other operating revenues remain fairly flat over the course of the forecast in the period as well. Taking a look at what we have here for historical and forecasted revenue. One big change that happened this year as opposed to years past, House Bill 920. What that did is that that reduced our effective mileage rate to its lowest point possible. So right now, Vermillion Local Schools is taxing its citizens the lowest amount according to the Ohio Constitution. However, because of House Bill 920, it cannot go lower than 20 mils. And because of that floor, when we do see modest gains in our overall property values as they start to increase, we will see some small gains in revenue because of those increases. And that's why I have the forecast a little more aid to us with the revenue side there. Moving on to personnel services, it's 3.010 on your forecast. This is the largest source of our expenditures, it's 52.5% of total expenditures. This consists of employee salaries and wages, includes any extended time, any severance pay, supplemental contracts, or overtime. Personnel services remain fairly flat despite historical negotiated increases due to attrition. However, we anticipate the increase in average of 2.37% each forecasted year. Personnel services grew 8.6% the previous five years, and looking at the next five years, I'm anticipating that to grow at about 9.9%. Looking at the historical and forecasted personnel services. Our personnel services is the highest spend in the last 10 years. Assuming staffing levels stay consistent, each year this expense will rise slightly due to step increases and negotiated wage increases. Moving on to the employee benefits side of things. Employee benefits, retirement insurance benefits, they account for 20.4% of the budget, and it's forecasted to increase over the next five years. It's consistent of retirement for all employees, or I'm sorry, consistent retirement for all employees, workers' compensation, early retirement incentives, Medicare, unemployment, and all health-related insurances. The district has estimated an annual increase of 4% each year. Looking at the historical trend here, the last two fiscal years, we saw health insurance rates increase at 6% each of the last two years. You know, assuming staffing levels stay consistent, this line will continue to increase due to A, our insurance costs, and also B, the board-paid portion of pensions are also paid out of this as well. So negotiated salary increases will also drive this cost up. Moving on to purchase services. Purchase services account for 14.4% of the forecasted district's expenditures. This is tuition paid to external providers, utilities, and they basically, all types of services performed by outside vendors. You know, the Fair School Funding Plan has a part in this as well. So the Fair School Funding Plan has eliminated the expenditures related to open enrollment, community schools, and scholarships. However, ODE has not yet been able to correct that in the funding for schools. So right now, even though the Fair School Funding has passed, every time we get a foundation payment from ODE, I still have expenditures for these types of open enrollment, community schools, scholarships, as I'm also receiving revenue for open enrollment. Fair School Funding Plan has eliminated that, just pays those schools directly. Until ODE, though, is able to recalculate that formula to make everything correct, we're still going to see those types of revenues and expenditures. But hopefully, by this time next year, everything will be eliminated, and that plan will be correct moving forward.
Either way, though, it's, I mean, once they do correct it, your revenue goes down, right?
Correct. And our expenditure then also go down because...
Right, but it washes.
Correct, everything's a wash, so the hard part this year is just finding what's that revenue going to be when they do fix it, what's those expenditures going to be once they fix it, and how do I present that? So that's the biggest challenge right now, as I said. The ones they do implement those changes, though, we'll have enough data for the cast when we fix that. Moving on to purchase services. Again, once the full phase in of the Fair School Funding Plan will eliminate the expenses related to educating our students outside Vermillion Local Schools. And these changes are why we see that large decrease in the purchase services. That is on our forecasted line, where those expenditures weigh in. So again, I have a little bit of payment fiscal year 22, and then they totally drop off in fiscal year 23. Moving on to line 6.010, this is your revenue over expenditure line. You know, this gives you a really good sense of the district's fiscal health. A positive number indicates that the school district spent within its revenue for that fiscal year. A negative number indicates that the school district spent, or is trending to spend more revenue than it brings in for that fiscal year. Typically, a forecast has estimated the negative number in that line six because the forecast is showing the trend, and does not include future changes or adjustments to that trend. So again, as this forecast shows, we might be trending in one direction, and as a board and as a district, we might say, we're good with that, we want to continue to do that. Or we're trending in a direction, we don't want to trend in that direction anymore. We have that ability to change that trend. The forecast, though, doesn't assume that we're going to make any changes, but the forecast is just showing that that's the trend as it sits right now. So moving on to the revenue over expenditure.
Why does this big drop in 2024 from here to here in the forecast?
Again, it's going to be because of the revenue at the top, and also because you're seeing increases every single year for the personnel services and for the benefits. So, you know, in that 6.010 line, really for fiscal year 2025 and 26, that's where we're expected to have more of a cost to the district than we have the revenue for. Since 2017, we have not spent more than we've brought in revenue-wise. But if we continue with our current operations today and just don't make any changes, by 2025 is when we would anticipate our expenditures to cross over the amount of money we were given. Taking a look at the forecast snapshot. Again, this is going to show exactly what that previous slide showed, but just in number form. As you can see, our total revenue stays right around that 24.5, 24.6, 24.9, basically out there in 2026. However, with the percent increases that we have specifically in the salaries benefits and also a little bit of purchase services, those have dropped with the health insurance and the retirements. As those continue to increase, that's really what's driving up our expenditures. Eventually, those two do, in fact, in 2025, push our expenditures higher than our revenue. That's why you're seeing the negative 371,000 results of operation. All in all, we started this year with 17.9 million in cash. And by the end of 2026, if we continue the course and don't make any changes, and again, we don't have any large capital expenditures in here as well, we would end the year 2026 with 17.9 million in cash. So final comments related to the forecast. Changes to school requirements and what and how the district reports to state agencies. It's seen a large increase over the years. We have more and more and more reporting requirements, things to keep track of, and because of that, it's creating jobs to keep up with the demand of things. Ultimately, the district will need to keep an eye on staffing levels, particularly in years 2025 and beyond. But overall, the district is in good financial standing, and will continue to do so throughout the forecast of the period. Any questions?
Oh, thank you for explaining that so well.
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. On number three, recommend a resolution to approve the following donations. Bicycle donation to STEM from Tim McGinbin, and $116.50 to the athletic department for Hawaiian ice.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have our consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board. The treasurer or the superintendent request that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one, minutes of the October 11th, 21 regular meeting, attachment C. Number two, approve the agreement with contract for children with disabilities, open enrollment between Edison Local Schools and Vermillion Local School District, attachment D. Number three, approve the renewal appointment of Lois Arnold, trustee for Ritter Public Library from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2028. Number four, approve the recommendation to authorize the following people to suspend students from North Point programs should their behavior and/or activities be severe enough to merit that said suspension, as listed. Number five, approve a resolution to extend employment of substitute teachers pursuant of Ohio Senate Bill One, attachment E. Number seven, approve the memorandum of understanding between Vermillion Teachers Association and the Vermillion Local School Board of Education, attachment H. Number seven, approve the following employment action. Resignations, Amber Stoller, food service manager, Vermillion High School, effective October 8th; Mark Craig, head mechanic, effective November 18th. Number eight, retirement. Laura Black, food service assistant manager, Vermillion Elementary School, effective January 1st, 2022. Number nine, a one-year classified limited contract for the 21-22 contract school year to Sarah Caudell, educational aide at Vermillion Elementary School; Mackenzie Gentry, monitor of Sarawayville School. Number 10, a one-year certified limited contract for the 21-22 contract school year to Jonathan Cruster, instrumental music. Number 11, a one-year additional duties contract for the 21-22 contract school year two, as listed. Number 12, a one-year supplemental contract for the 21-22 contract school year two, as listed. Number 13, a one-year special project contract, up to 18 hours for LETRS training at the special contract rate $28 for the 21-22 contract school year two, as listed. Number 14, resolution to approve Ohio Schools Council Cooperative Advertising and Receiving Bids for School Buses, Chasses, and Bodies, attachment G. Anything that needs to be removed?
I'd like to pull number six, just for some discussion, maybe... I'd like to pull number six, just for some discussion, maybe back on that in some other way.
You want to vote on that today?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a few questions, that's all.
So we'll do the rest of those. I'll move, but consent agenda. Justin Caldwell, please.
Mrs. Dennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abermild.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
So then we're going to...
So let's go back and take number six and make a motion to approve. So I'll make a motion to approve number six separately in the discussion.
Eric, I'll second.
All right, so my question is, we're voting to have a memorandum of understanding to establish supplemental contracts. Like, the robotics and especially the esports were just kind of presented to us last meeting, right? As an idea. And we did understand, I did understand at the time that if we move forward with it, it would generate a supplemental contract. But is this, you know, putting the memorandum of understanding into the contract, I'm fine with. Does it mean that we're automatically moving forward with it, or? So here's my question is, I don't even know, you know, like when we brought swimming on board a couple of years ago, we did it pretty cautiously, right? And because when you're approving supplemental contracts, you want to make sure you've got a fair level of participation and it's really something that's going to take off and go, and it did, it worked out well. I mean, this was just thrown at us last meeting. My concern is, you know, okay, am I going to pay a few thousand bucks for somebody to be a supplemental contract for this to oversee three or four kids playing video games on a video game team? I don't know. I don't know what the level of interest is, I don't know exactly what all the details are, maybe.
Right, we had, for this swim team, we had, you know, they had approved that they had kids signed up, they had someone willing to coach, they had, all of that was presented to us and we had...
I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea or a terrible thing, I just, I'm curious, you know, like what are the, how are we going to approach it, what is going to happen with it? I mean, have we gone out, I mean, have we gone out and solicited to see who might be interested and how many kids really want to participate?
So are you, you're referring more to the esports but not the robotics or to...
No, I kind of both, I think. I think, I just, I mean, is it, you know, I mean, we got to make sure we're doing the right thing, right? And supplemental contracts cost money and don't want to deny any kids any programs at all. I think it's great that we have new things, it's just that we're a school district that's only so big.
Yeah.
And the more we do, it, you know, we just need to make sure it's something that's going to benefit a lot of kids.
What we can do, and it's not urgent that we pass this tonight, we can come back to the board at the next board meeting and make a presentation of the things that are involved with both of these activities and give you more information. And we'll also, in the meantime, recommend that you go out to Amherst and a couple of other schools that offer esports right now, and you can take a look at what they're offering and what that looks like. Robotics is very established and it's not as established as the esports at this point. But you can also take a look at the robotics. The robotics has been around for a long time and there's competitions that are available for you to go out and see. So I'll give you some recommendations for you to go out and take a look at these things and then we'll make presentations at the next board meeting. It's not urgent that we pass this tonight, we're just trying to get it...
That's good, I appreciate it. Yeah, just, you know, a little bit more about, you know, how would we expect it to go, right? Is there, how many kids do we think would be involved? Is there, are there other costs involved after the FAG travel or anything like that, right? Just how would, you know, what would we expect to see in the next year, the year after? Along with that, wouldn't we be something, it'd be nice to see some kind of job disruption for that supplemental contract? What is that coach or leader supposed to do?
Yeah, we'll include all of that in the presentation at the next board meeting.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, the next section, we're going to have to go through the...
Well, so when we first did this, I believe it was recommend a resolution to approve that contract. So right now, we'll vote on that contract and then we can always bring it back in the next meeting.
We can vote or we can table the whole, we can table the whole thing, right?
We can do that too.
And not take them all.
Table, table it.
We can table?
Yes. So we'll make a recommendation to table item six from the consent agenda. I'll move. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis.
Yes.
Mr. Abermild.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Motion approved, our motion approved table 5-0.
Okay, the next section of our meeting is public participation. Board of Education, excuse me, recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. The presiding officer shall be guided by the following rules. A, public participation shall be permitted only as indicated on the order of business in the bylaws of this board. B, anyone having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board may participate during the public participate portion of the meeting. C, participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name. D, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two-minute duration. E, no participant may speak more than once on any topic. F, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. The presiding officer may, one, prohibit public comments that are frivolous, repetitive, and/or harassing; two, interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, abusive, off-topic, obscene, or irrelevant; three, request any individual to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum or is disruptive to the conduct of the meeting; four, request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when the person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting; five, call recess or adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. Okay, would anyone like to come up and speak?
Yes. Yep.
Hello, my name is Robin Aston. I was going to talk about the esports, some of the issues I've had with it. In the September, I'm sorry, the October board meeting, I was concerned when they brought up the esports. I looked up the definition of esports. It's a multiplayer video game played competitively for spectators, typically by professional gamers. I presented to the board on the October meeting some warnings against this in our community. And I, first of all, like to speak as a former tennis coach. An added sport to our school such as this, and it would be touted as a sport and advertised as such. It does fly in the face of sports which are hard-earned on the field or court by athletes that have worked hard, that have exercised and shown exertion of body and mind to work as a team, to gain a skill, and take it to a competitive level and earn a, you know, personal satisfaction and school spirit and school pride. I don't see the esports as doing this at all, it can't be matched. You know, it's on a computer screen. Physical sports teams invite the community to participate by, you know, cheering on that team, individuals invite the community to engage in conversation and spirit. The spirit of teamwork is lost when screen time is the only engaging element on the esports thing. And speaking of screen time, I think students have had so much time online, online venues, oh my goodness. The prolonged exposure to the computer screen, haven't we seen less physical activity? Are we going to promote that as, you know, in a venue here of, you know, an educational body? Does it, as we've seen less physical activity, we have seen more obesity? More inactivity and that we're going to put more screen time in for these kids on this esport? And they're going to gravitate to it because kids do, I mean, they're going to love it. And we're going to just throw in their face and we're going to pay money for it.
That's two minutes. I'm sorry, I know it's fast.
It went fast, okay.
I know, we have...
Okay, I didn't address this at the October meeting and now I see it's on mic already to be voted on. I guess I didn't get listened to, or somebody didn't get listened to.
I heard you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I have some documentation for you guys, can I bring it up, please?
My name is Joseph Jones. The reason why I'm here today to talk to you is I sent you guys all an email last night. We, as parents, for the last, this is going on number four month, have come to you with our concerns and I feel like we're not, not really being heard. We've read the law to you verbatim. Within this document right here are the five laws that I feel that you guys have broken. And it's by what the law defines, not by what I feel. Which puts me out of problem. The problem is, is that federal legal child abuse is defined as any act or failure to act on the part of a parent or caretaker which results in death, serious physical harm, emotional harm, sexual abuse, exploitation, or an act or failure to act which presents imminent risk or serious harm. Now, serious harm is defined in the U.S. federal code means any harm, whether it's physical or non-physical, including psychological, financial, or reputational harm that is sufficiently serious under all the surrounding circumstances to compel a reasonable person of the same background and the same circumstances to form or to continue performing labor or services in order to avoid incurring that harm. So my main concern is, is that, we talked to you guys last month about pink shade and I haven't heard anything about pink shade. And there's been legislation that has come into effect and there hasn't been any policy change, really. And I feel at this point that our kids' rights are being violated to the point that they're being abused. And as a father, I'm standing up for that. I'm letting you guys know that I just served the Ohio State House of Representatives with litigation over the same stuff. And once those house of cards fall, I won't have any excuses for you guys. I've talked to you at every meeting, I've read the law verbatim to you. I've done everything I could do in my power.
Yep, it's two minutes, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Yep. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so you guys all know me from the last couple meetings.
Please say your name again, please.
Sorry, Kathleen Heinz.
Thank you.
I wanted to bring up, I'm doing only two minutes. I'm going to bring up water at schools. You guys are doing refill stations, but you're not providing cups next to the refill stations for kids that, you know, kids or kids forget their water bottle, forget their cup that day. I've had my kids call me in the middle of the day, begging me to bring them a water bottle. That's unacceptable. And you need to let the, you need to let all the student body know that if they need a cup for water, for those kids that are a little bit introvert and won't, you know what I mean, as a teacher, that they're provided to them. I mean, if there is a system needs to be set up or something like that, where I'll donate vaccine cups, like, something needs to happen. Also, I have some information here about FERPA. The school cannot share directory information of children for their possible post contacts, only confirm cases that report to the school. When Phil is giving our kids' names to the director of health, you're violating FERPA. And I don't think the board's like quite aware of what FERPA is. Because I say FERPA and everybody's like, oh, what is that, you know what I mean? So I have some information here for you guys to read. You have to prove that COVID is significant and dangerous threat to these children. All kids, 99.997% of them will be absolutely fine. So you are doing all of these measures for a .003% chance that somebody might have a bad reaction, especially with vaccines coming out. It's ridiculous. So, since I have two minutes, yeah. And also, your school nurse called me today to quarantine one of my children. The school is not allowed, not allowed, to quarantine children. The Department of Health is. You guys are continuing to contact trace and your nurses still calling to be like, hey, you're quarantined. She's not allowed to do that. That has to come from the Department of Health and you know that. I also sent you all an email about the recording that I have of pink shade. I hope you guys listen to that and, you know, you guys really need to look at this contact tracing. You're violating our rights as parents and your rights violating federal law.
Thank you.
And, yeah, this is, I want to give this to you because this is all the information on COVID-19.
Let me open it, can you resend that?
Yeah, I can resend it to you tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Heinz. I'm just going to go ahead and spitfire a lot of things. A, about the esports or whatever. I would really like to know what type of games. Because I do know this much, kids staying behind the screen, playing video games, all of a sudden you take it away, they're evil, evil demons. Okay, everybody here is a kid, they are the worst breed of child now because they are mad. So that is one of my major concerns on that. Plus, you know, it's a video game, like you said. You're going to take away from all the experience, bonding, growing, everything.
Teamwork.
All right, second, I did get a phone call from the school today, because my wife did, about my daughter having to basically quarantine herself from the secretary of elementary school. I called back and was able to take a break from work and spoke to the vice principal at the elementary school that confirmed, and I have it recorded, if I need to go to litigations, I will, and that will be presented, have it recorded, that he admitted, I asked him this, just like this, so you are contact tracing then, right, you know, for the state to get the kids? And I said it just like that, he goes, yes. So I was like, so you're confirming that you are contact tracing with the health? He goes, yes. Then I educated that he is not a branch, though, a health department agency of any way, shape, or form, and he's illegally doing this. And you guys, unfortunately, are on the chopping block for the health department. Okay, because he has no funds to do any more contact tracing. In the email, he'll admit that, okay? Second, this right here is a mask that I am required sometimes to wear at work. It is a heavy-duty mask. It's much better than that one and that one, although those look great on your faces. It is much better than that. We have people that have had both vaccines, wear these on daily basis and still have caught COVID. The suggestion your assistant principal gave to me was, my daughter Elizabeth can wear a mask till the 19th. Are you serious? Force her to wear a mask? Or she can, you know, self-quarantine for five days, then take a test, wait two more days, then she might be able to come back to school, as long as she's named it. Or self-quarantine for the next 10 days. That is just outright ridiculous. You're rocking these kids, every little experience we all had. It's ridiculous. And you guys are basically the health department's little puppets. And so unfortunately, you, Phil, you're the top dog of it all, okay? And I only trust you because you're in direct contact with him and they follow what you say. Unless, I don't know, I might have that mistaken.
No, there is no vote on it.
Okay, but this is literally getting out of hand, all right? And I will...
And I'll resend that recording.
And I will go to litigations. If this keeps continuing, hear us, hear us now. Because this is it, this is your warning. And I'm sorry you guys are on the chopping block, make it happen.
Gotcha. That's two minutes, but I do, I do hear you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. I'm sorry. I'm passionate about.
You're allowed to be.
I'm passionate. If you guys, I could actually, if you guys would like to look at this, you can, it's really, it's a big.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
Hi guys. First off, can we talk about this?
Say your name, please.
Eric Jones. Can we talk about the two minute rule? Is there a way that we can vote? Possibly, can you guys discuss that and maybe? You have more than normal participation that's been happening. So is this something that we can like?
Possibly at the next meeting, we can extend it for this meeting and as a two minute.
Well, because you're not consistent on it. Last meeting there wasn't, the meeting before that, and now you're instituting it. And it's not a consistent, so I feel like you had some knowledge that people were coming up here, giving you emails and you're kind of like, well, I'm going to stick to the rules.
No, we actually have.
Good point. Good point, good request.
And we can.
I think the reason, the reason we initially went to two minutes was because when we had the meeting in the cafeteria, there were so many people, right?
Yeah.
And, and maybe in light of the fact that it's a smaller crowd.
It's been around, it's been for a while, but you guys haven't had the kind of parent participation in years past that you're seeing now.
True.
So maybe can we look at that and kind of?
We can look at that.
Secondly, I believe Lisa sat in for you, Phil, last week. And we were going to talk with Pete Shade and decide, whatever happened to that? Did anybody even contact him at all?
It wasn't passed along to me that you were supposed to meet with Pete Shade or that you were supposed to.
You guys were supposed to contact him. You guys are going to have a working session with him.
Continue to do what you want to do.
So this was completely dropped. This is another example where you guys are just not hearing. And by the way, congratulations on your election. You guys haven't heard, we put you into the office and you literally didn't hear us at all. Not, not one single person contacted Pete Shade. Another thing is, how long are we doing the flow chart for? Is there, is there a date, a time? It's not even supposed to, it's October 13th. It was illegal.
FERPA says that. You have time.
You don't have a single thing. We come up here every single week or every single. Every single month.
No, I'm listening to him, please.
Every single month, we, for three, four months now. There's no COVID agenda on here. You have clearly enough people that are still talking about it. You don't have any kind of task force dedicated to, when are we, when are we out of this? It is so, you had 60 kids that got COVID in two and a half.
That's two minutes. I'm sorry. Anyone else like to speak?
Different issue. I'm a Samuel.
Nothing's different issue, right? Yep, you're good.
I'm Robin Aston. I'm here to talk about curriculum. I've been so pleased to see that the strategic plan for over a million local schools is online and published so we can see what our kids are learning. I was looking at the multi-tiered system of support on reading, writing, speaking, every child, every class, every day. The building relationship, whatever it takes. And that the, you know, the faculty has, has written this out and they've gone together to be life-ready. And these core values, they've made a promise. And here's the promise, one of them, and, and a lot of them I liked. I took issue with one and I'm going to bring it up now. To embrace new ideas without, and this is a promise they've made every class, every student, every day. To embrace new ideas without allowing past experiences to interfere. I've given that so much thought. To embrace new ideas without allowing past experiences to interfere. I wonder how that would sound to our veterans tomorrow when we celebrate Veterans Day. We don't want your past experience to implicate any of the new ideas that we're bringing to the students today. I'm kind of getting passionate about thinking, when I really think about this some more. Past experiences, aren't the past experiences building blocks? I have a master's in education and when I was learning about student learning, a schematic is what a child brings to a learning task that can build upon structure for future learning. Concepts established, scaffolding, if you will. But I think it could have been better worded to embrace new ideas with, with intertwining our past learning. To embrace new ideas with intertwining our, our learning to, because our past informs our future. So I don't know who, who formulates these ideas, but I'm, I'm, I'm an issue with it and I, I want to know that. You have people, you know, reading these and parents that are questioning them and I'm one. So I want to speak till my whole time is up. I don't know what you might do about this or I think you need to scrutinize it more. Because someone has signed off on this, that, that teachers have written and worked on and I, you know, I don't know what, why, why the past has to interfere with our new ideas.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Can we go back up about the same topic? Or like a branch off from my spitfire topic? Because I spit like, all right, there's four things. Can, yeah, you know, yes, yes.
I don't care if that's the area. This is totally different topic. We were going to bring it up.
My name is Chris Hines. There was an incident that had occurred where, um, me and my wife had an argument, our kids overheard it and they misheard us.
In the middle of the night.
In the middle of the night, like three in the morning.
Because that's three weeks.
That's when I get up to go to work, all right? And they were, they were upset. My wife and I both consulted that afterwards and I went off to work. And then come to find out later, um, they were both, they did, probably one of them, I think my daughter Lillian, voiced her concern to a teacher.
And you were quarantined.
And then in my daughter, who's Elizabeth, who's super emotional, like, oh my God, if you raise your voice at her.
Okay, Chris.
Okay, but, um, she was upset about it and it's fine, typical kids. And what had wound up happening was a protocol had happened that I felt like was like just downright disrespectful.
A slap in the face.
Like a slap in the face to me as a parent. Okay, I'm not allowed to have an argument with my daughter.
Well, Lily holds.
I got, I got, I got it babe, I got it.
Lily holds and be a story.
My daughter Lillian fabricated a story.
Which is just.
Because she wanted attention. And anyways, they got pulled aside by teachers. And then basically got interrogated by the teachers. We were not informed, we were not present.
And then several staff members.
And then, yeah, and then several staff members decided to go ahead. And in order to call Children's Services, which they had posted case.
Already.
In order to call Children's Services, there's supposed to be a neglect or a form of abuse present right then and there.
According to your policy.
According to your policy, which we regret, and Children's Services' policy. And you guys are not allowed to talk to our kids in that matter of, something of that matter without calling us and having us present. It's basically like if a juvenile went to the police station. They can't talk to him, even if he's 17.
No, they can, but they can add.
They, yeah, but you know, you know what I'm saying, like?
But we feel like you guys should like, you know, respect parents' rights and parents, you know. My conversation.
We filed a FOIA for the Children's Services and the only thing they could tell us is multiple staff members.
FOIA.
Wait, sorry. Multiple staff members called Children's Services on us. Now, the only way you guys.
For domestic violence.
Yeah, for, for possible domestic violence.
When there was no domestic violence.
Hey, can I talk?
Yeah.
And she's upset too, okay, because this is just wrong.
Oh wait, your two minutes is up. I think you might have two minutes because I have to talk about.
Wait, it didn't go up?
Yeah, it did.
Oh, it did?
Yeah, I know, I can talk about it.
Sorry.
About the same issue that he was just talking about. So, an argument in the middle of the night and, and believe me, Lily didn't go to school prior. I was actually in your office that morning, talking to Izzy's teacher and talking to the secretary. I was fine. I wasn't beaten up or anything. Lily is a story maker. We were actually in the, we were actually in a meeting with the principal three weeks prior about Lily, you know, forgetting how to do math some days, making up stories that don't make any sense. And then this happens and, you know, kids, they make up, they make up stuff. But I had a 15-minute conversation, turned into the police showing up at my house and then Children's Services. And no call from the school, no, even if like, you know, what happened, happened. Wouldn't you think the school would call and make sure that I was okay or Chris was okay or somebody, maybe you guys cared a little bit? But to pull my children aside, question them. And the call, I had my kids at 19. I gave my life for them. And what you guys don't know is we've already had an incident with Children's Services that we were the victim of. And I have a gold rating with them. Couldn't believe we were still together. And they've already closed the case. But what they did say found funny was that several staff members, not just the principal, not just the, several decided to call concerned about domestic violence for two happy kids. And what if that went the other way and I wasn't who I was and have representation for myself and understand the laws and that something else were to happen? I just, it's just wrong. What happened was wrong. It's not right. If some kid tells you some off-the-wall story at the end of the day, when this supposedly happened at the beginning, and so she didn't want to do her math homework, so she made up some story. And then you questioned my daughter, but you don't ask her, where were you at the time? Were you even there? Where, anything, nothing. No questions that made sense, just the agenda that they wanted to push. But I, I just don't appreciate that as a parent. I wasn't getting to bring it up at this meeting, but I think it does need to be brought up. Because we do have rights as parents.
The only way you shouldn't talk to us or call us is if you deem us the predator.
Yes, and like I'm abusing them.
I don't, I'm not a predator, yeah. I may be a big guy and look intimidating. Trust me, those girls, I'm, I'm like their little, you know, slave. What do you want? I love you. Daddy loves you, okay? I'm not that guy. And I would never, ever be that guy. I've got a much bigger picture in mind for my life. Okay, I did not like getting labeled like that. It's rude, disrespectful. And I'll say, you guys did, please pass that message along to the people that did. Because that's just not right. Show us some respect. You want respect from us, give it back. Please. You shouldn't even have to ask for that.
Gotcha.
Thank you for hearing.
Would you like to say something? No? Is there anything else?
Just a, I'm sorry, just a comment on that. It, it's unfortunate. I'm sorry that that happened to you guys. Hopefully, maybe if you think about it, understand that as a school district, even if, even if a kid makes something up, you almost have to report it, right? You're obligated to.
Why would they talk to the 13-year-old daughter? My oldest. That will affirm it from.
But I don't think you go talk to a kid about another kid's problem, right?
Then why do they call Elizabeth?
So you, you report it to the, the people that are supposed to investigate it, not the school district.
Well, then the school district investigates it. And it's confirmed with one of my daughters, not my oldest one, just the other one.
Child Protective Services.
No, 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 no.
They call the police.
Well, but that's part of the process, right? I mean, and you guys are obviously, you guys are obviously clear.
I'm sorry, they didn't call Child Protective Services once. They had multiple people from this facility call them. They weren't, they are never abusing or had a bruise on them. They are not neglected. They are healthy.
And you know what? This, this turned out for the best, right? Because you obviously are good parents and.
Oh, yeah. I have five.
Another seventy-two hours.
What about the kid that doesn't, what about the kid that doesn't have good parents though?
I understand the policy.
We, and we understand you guys' concern, but come on. Common sense. Kids come to school happy all the time, no sign of anything whatsoever like that. Clean, don't smell, not malnourished, nothing. And then out of nowhere.
Common sense.
That's common sense. Come on, okay, hold on. We should call the parents, see what's going on. Because they're no, they're not predators.
Especially when they met with us two weeks prior.
And that's where I'm going with it. And I understand. Thank you for being that, those type of people.
Yes, that I will say, like, I get that. They would, it isn't, you turn neglected, but my kids don't show those signs.
You spoke with the principal on this and?
No, the assistant principal. Oh yes, I spoke with the, uh.
Oh, we're not done with her.
The principal on this and she was.
We're not done with her. Why didn't she shut up about it?
She was very dismissive.
No, shut it. No, I just got to do that. We'll take it off with her.
If you'd like to come in, because obviously I heard only one side of the story and if you'd like to come in and speak with me.
She was using, Phil, she was using this, what was the word that she kept using? Oh, concern. She was using that, oh, we were, we were concerned. As a gray area, that it was okay for what they did. That was.
He's saying, if you want to come in and discuss it and like, would you be willing to discuss it with us? Thank you.
She might be more available than me. I work like 12, 14-hour days. The fact that I'm here today is rare.
I'm just calling anytime that you're concerned.
He didn't.
I, I appreciate that, Phil. Thank you for extending that out. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Phil, my name is Kathy French. And I'm glad to see that you're a mental health therapist on this list.
Yeah.
Um, I have an honest question that is coming to my attention, one of my grandchildren. And so I wanted to address you and get your.
One second, if you would state your name, I missed your name.
Kathy French.
Thank you.
And the reason I'm here is, I have spoken with one of my grandchildren and, and actually, no, it was an adult parent of, of a friend of theirs. And it was close to Halloween and she was saying how she saw children dressed as animals. And she thought it was part of the Halloween thing. And then it came to her attention for her children that was attending school that you have something in the school system called furries?
Furries, yes.
Furries. That's the first time I've heard of this brand parent. And I did a little research on it and it's like, what is your policy in addressing this issue? Because, you know, in our days when we went to school, we had a dress code. A decent dress code. And if you want to put Kathy at school, you have, of course, your own uniforms. But I think that's, when I did a little research on there, usually 50% of the children have been woolen and something. And so they're dressing themselves as animals. Okay, I think that's a little bit of an issue with social skills and maybe mental problems. And I think that you, when you allow that kind of thing in the school system, you're pure. I, I think with all the identity gender crisis that we have on hand these days, when we have to, you know, change our pronouns now and we go from he or she to it or other, even when you're born, you can check it off on a list now. I don't think that this is a healthy item that should be in your school system when it comes to dress code as animals. And I think it's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard at these times. And that's why I'm here tonight, but I want to be here more often. Because I see there's a lot more issues going around now. I serve on many boards and I'm quite interested. I will give you, I want to say credit for how you handled the situations. But we're telling you, I think you're doing good. Their concerns are great and, uh, and I guess I'm done. But I would like some feedback if you have a chance to respond to my question about the furries. Because if you're not doing anything to address the issue, I hope you do so. I think that's pretty important.
Thank you.
Yeah, are you going to answer the question, huh?
Can you, uh, I, I will call you by, can you give me your phone number or I address you by email?
Yes.
Because I'd like to do some, a little bit more research on our policy on, on, on that as well and just talk with you a little bit more.
And that's fine. I respect that, but should that be something you have to kind of like research on? That should be given. I think you asked one of us here.
But there's also rights on, on other sides of things that I, I, before I respond to you, I want to be sure that.
So the school has a policy with dress code?
Yes, we do have a dress code policy. We have a student handbook and there are things that reference dress code and things of.
Yeah, I'll just point out, if you can't wear a, a, a.
A collar.
I want to say, well, let's just call it a man or a Trump shirt or anything like that. Why is it okay to dress up like an animal?
Understood.
No, just send them home.
Yeah.
You even send them off if they were Trump.
Dress code. So I think you should be a lot more stronger with your dress code.
That's wrong.
It hits everybody evenly. That's, that's a serious mental issue, more than wearing a MAGA hat or anything like that. That's a real serious mental issue. And since you have a mental therapist on board here, I would think they would do a family plan.
They called Children's Services on that, if my kid knows an animal, wouldn't you? I called Children's Services on that.
That's, okay.
I'm very much.
Let this lady speak.
Hit the news in the last.
Can you state your name, please?
I just want to know.
Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Diane Laird. I'm a 30-year member of this community. I noticed in this, in your minutes, which were wonderfully.
One second, please. I'm not sure what's going on. I really don't know what's going on right now.
Hey, she's talking and nobody said anything to you, so why don't you let her continue to talk?
I'm not sure what's going on.
Why are you picking?
Why are you being aggressive? Why are you being aggressive?
It's rude though, man.
You were aggressive at the last meeting too. That's the second meeting in a row. Can't believe it. Maybe you have an aggression problem.
I don't.
I'm allowed to laugh. Where, where does it say that you can't? What, where does it say that you can't?
Okay, but we're in a meeting, so we're gonna stop.
I don't even laugh loud.
So we can let Diane speak.
That's the second time you've called one of us out.
I'll be last.
I was surprised to see that we're, we have, I'm not just biased in equity and education and professional, but development. In this, in this school, for the certified staff, is it also, are there teachers also being taught? I, I'm sorry, I have been negligent, I have not been here. But is this a follow-up to something that's already going on with teachers and other staff?
I don't understand.
Franklin, the leader in me, was providing training, coaching materials, unconscious bias and equity in education and professional development. This was for 35, 35, 35.
Talking about equity training, you guys were talking about last time, like, equity training they're doing, yeah, that your equity training, you guys brought up last time, for that your professional staff, January 14th, has to get some equity training, equity inclusion training, this is talking about.
Is that a requirement, or are we just being a bit hard?
No, it's, it's not a requirement, but, uh, there is training that's being offered as professional development for our staff.
Who's doing that training?
It's, equity is an interesting word. Long ways from equality.
Long ways.
Very Marxist.
Very.
And I'd be glad to surprise and supply some material for that. It's not a healthy concept. It certainly isn't. Equality suggests that our students will be encouraged to compete and be evaluated on merit. Equity is very different. We don't need it in the school. We need students to be challenged and to learn. And I, I'm sorry to speak, you're like, after the fact, but I'm concerned about this. Bias, you know, I'm afraid they're gonna have to learn to live with it, because it will be in the world.
Thank you.
Thank you.